Ben Stanley, are you able to hear us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll start with a prayer from Rudy.
My name is Rudy Livingston for the record. Our dear Father in heaven, we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful county of ours with so many wonderful people that are residents of this county and so many wonderful people that work for the county as well. We're grateful, Father, for the opportunity to be be free, to be able to make decisions and to make choices and to direct the affairs of this area. We ask thee, Father, bless us this day that we will be able to have inspiration and guidance as we go through the important issues of the county. Bless us that we will be able to do those things that are in the best interest of the citizenry here and the people that are represented here. We ask thee, Father, bless our representatives in Salt Lake, that they will be able to do those things that are best interests of the state and our people here as well. Please be with us in all things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, and a pledge by Ezra.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just to confirm, no one here from the Century Farm Award? I had received an email that they were going to present that in the Spanish Fork City Council meeting, but let's see, looks like Lisa maybe didn't get that message. Okay.
Just while it's on the agenda, we mention it. It is a huge honor and accomplishment to meet the century. That just means that their family has been farming the same land for over 100 years, which is pretty awesome.
Very cool for the Evans family. Yep, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so now is when we will build our consent agenda. We'll go ahead and suspend the rules as Commissioner Sakovic is unable to join us. Let's see here, items one through ten.
I had none.
I don't have any either. Eleven through twenty.
We're gonna hold item number twenty.
Holding item twenty.
And we had a couple of staff requests, item thirteen for that to be continued and for item twenty-four to be stricken.
How long to continue item thirteen?
Just one week should be fine.
And twenty-four to strike?
Yes.
Okay.
And I wanted to hold, we're gonna table item twenty-two to discuss in closed session.
Okay, yep. Good with that?
That's all I had.
Okay, and then we'll need to hold item twenty-five for closed?
Yep.
Any others? Yeah, we'll strike twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Feeling good about that, Alice? All right. Wee wee. Okay.
Okay, I have us continuing agenda item number thirteen for one week, which I don't have in front of me. I think it's March sixth.
That's correct.
Meeting that day, okay. And then holding items twenty, tabling twenty-two, striking twenty-four. And then as far as closed meetings, we're gonna hold the stated twenty-five and strike twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Lovely. Okay, item number twenty.
All right. So item number twenty is to authorize a staffing change for the auditor's office from a basically getting rid of the confidential assistant and upgrading that position to a chief deputy. I am in support of this, but I'm holding it for a couple of reasons. Number one, I wanna go back in time two and a half years ago. And two and a half years ago, when we voted to split the clerk and auditor's office, I had voted no. And the reason I voted no is because I felt, having been the clerk and auditor, that both positions needed a chief deputy. And I knew that that would cost us money that we don't have. I do firmly believe that we need to give the departments the resources they need to be successful. And I think that they need these resources. And Commissioners Sakovic and Lee assured everybody that they didn't need a chief deputies and that this would not cost the taxpayers any money to split those offices. And here we are two and a half years later, and every single one of the objections that I had to splitting that office without the proper resources has come to fruition. We've had to add supervisors, we're currently looking for office space, we've added a chief deputy to the clerk's office, we're adding a chief deputy to the auditor's office. Literally every one of those things has come to fruition and every one of them has cost us money. We are running a $10 million deficit this year in the general fund. We're also running a deficit in the ANC fund. And on a year that we're running a deficit, and we've had multiple years where inflation has outpaced growth, we are having to spend even more money because we, and I will quote myself, split these offices in a half-assed way without giving them the resources they needed to succeed. So I'm willing to vote for this. This will cost the taxpayers money. And we cannot rob Peter to pay Paul. We are going to have to pay the bill. For too many years, our county had elected officials who took short-term political wins at the expense of the long-term success of our county, and then we have to pay those bills. Those chickens are coming home to roost. We are having to pay this bill. I believe auditor Mann, when he says he needs a chief deputy, I knew he needed one two and a half years ago. I think we need to give the office what it needs, but we're gonna have to pay this bill, and it's going to increase our deficit. And this is a decision that was made two and a half years ago by Commissioners Sakovic and Lee in which I voted no. So I do support giving them what they need. And as adults and as executives, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay these bills. But I do wanna point out that we continue to have to pay for the mistakes of people who looked at short-term political gains over the long-term success of our county. And that's gonna cause issues. So with that said, I mean, I don't know if you have any comments. You were not here then.
Nope.
I think it was December third, 2021, when this was first mentioned. I think it was a week later, so probably December 10th, 2021, that this was voted on. Anyone watching on YouTube, you can go look up those meetings. You're already there on YouTube. You can look them up. And those things have come to fruition. But I think it's very important that when we make decisions, even if it's the hard political decision, we need to do what's right for our county, for our citizens, and for our children. So
Nothing from me.
Then I will make a motion to approve item number twenty.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone. Okay, seeing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone. Okay, seeing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Well, you gotta unmute.
There we go. La la la. Okay, we're back in regular session and, uh,
I'll make a motion to untable, is it twenty-four or twenty-two?
Oh, excuse me, two, twenty-two, thank you.
Motion to untable item number twenty-two.
Okay, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I will make a motion to continue without date, item number twenty-two.
Okay, perfect, and I can second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.